I want to welcome everyone to the March 16 regular board meeting. I would like to also welcome our student representative for this evening, Dwayne Jack, from Middle College at Northgate. Later in the meeting, Mr. Jack will have an opportunity to provide some comments. Also, I'd like to welcome Anya Ritchie, our new Board Office Administrator. She has a Bachelor's in Sociology with an emphasis in social work and a minor in enter study. She is finishing her Masters in Criminal Justice this spring. We're very excited for Anya to be here. Welcome, Anya. Okay, Ms. Fody, roll call.
Director Blanford?
Here.
Director Gary?
Here.
Director Harris?
Here.
Director Patu?
Here.
Director Pinkham?
Here.
Director Burke?
Here.
If everyone could please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I hand it over to Superintendent Nyland, I wanted to say a big thank you to Lauren for holding down the fort because she's been in there by herself these last couple of weeks. So, thank you so much, Lauren, for all the work that you do to keep us going. We do not have a recognition for this evening meeting. Student presentation tonight, we have the Young Artists Academy Performance. YAA is an innovative day-in-after-school program housed in Seattle and High Line public schools designed to help scholars improve language and writing skill as well as the ability to collaborate and present effective oral presentations. By integrating these skills with performing arts, young scholars write, perform, present original speeches that address relevant issues such as bullying, peer pressure, self-esteem, leadership, racism, politics, and diversity. These works are developed into fun, yet impactful culminating projects that are viewed as guides, standards for scholars of all ages. I'd like to invite all the directors to please have a seat in the front row so we can watch the performance. Thank you.
Okay, we're used to a little more energy, so I'll ask again. How is everybody doing today?
Great!
Woo! There we go. My name is Toya Taylor, and I am the founder of WeApp, We Act, Present, and Perform Young Artists Academy. And today, I'm very honored to have a few of my scholars with me from Orca K through eighth and South Shore PK through eighth. And these students in WeApp Young Artists Academy, we are a day school and after-school program where we teach young scholars grades fourth through ninth to speak with purpose. Our mission is that every child's voice deserves to be in the front of the classroom and never the back. We learn to use our voices as an instrument that are a gift to our community. Therefore, we become advocates of ourselves, our peers, and ultimately, our community. So, we are proud to be here today. Every single speech that you will hear is an original speech written by our scholars. Their voices are unscripted and uncensored, and these are their words to you. So, with no further ado, I welcome and give a big cheer to the Young Artists Academy. So, we just had an oratory competition over the weekend at South Shore K through A. They hosted it, where we had 35 scholars who are part of the WeApp Young Artists Academy compete with original speeches. This is one of our first-place winners, Naima, who attends Orca K through eighth, and she is going to present her piece.
Hi, my name is Naima Mohaba. I am since seventh grade. I go to Orca K through eight. My piece is called "Who Are You?" Dear Mr. Racism, you judge me based on the color of my skin, and I'm sick and tired. I'm sick and tired of you telling me that I'm not pretty because I'm black. I can't become a doctor or who I want to be because I'm black, and me being black won't get me anywhere, so I might as well give up now. Who are you? Who are you to put a label on me and say that I'm not good enough? Say that being black isn't good enough? Then there was that one day. You said too much, and it actually got to me. I rushed home, ran to my room, and I started to cry. I looked at myself, and I wondered, why? Why am I black? That's when I thought, maybe he's right. Maybe I'm not good enough. Because in society, if a black person and a white person are battling for a job, it's most likely for the white person to get it, right? No, that's not right. We have to fight, fight for what's right. And I thought that was to let go, so I did and went to sleep. But the next day is just like the rest. I have to hear you judge me because I'm black. But guess what? Being black isn't a bad thing. To you, it might be, but to me, it's not, because that's who I am. And who I am is fighting for my identity, because you're not going to rip that away from me. The only thing that's ripped off of me is the label you put on me. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kira Maynard. I'm in eighth grade. I go to Orca K through eight, and this is called "I Will Not Apologize." Don't wear that. You'll look like a whore. Cover up. What are you, a slut? Why are you dressed so provocatively? Girls hear things like this all the time. We can't fit into these boxes society creates for us. We try to escape but are pushed back down by the labels that seep into our skin and brains, making it impossible for us to be ourselves. Be smart, but not so smart that everyone is intimidated by you. Wear makeup to look pretty, but don't look fake. Show people that you are a strong, independent woman, but make sure men feel like they're needed. We are told these things that contradict each other, that make it impossible for us to do anything right in society's eyes. Every day, people tell us, "Don't wear that. You'll look like a slut." "Show some skin. You look like a prude." I do not want your opinions. I am not dressing for you. I am dressing for me. And so what if the shirt I am wearing shows a strap? What do you want me to do? Apologize for being a girl with female body parts? And if you get turned on by the shorts I'm wearing, that's your problem. But don't make me change just because of how you feel. The inner struggle in girls' minds never lets up. There is constantly the battle between society and your heart. You change three times before deciding on what to wear, because the first outfit you try on is only what your boyfriend likes, and the second one shows way too much skin. And the third one is comfortable, but you know that you're going to get laughed at if you walk out of your house with sweatpants and a messy bun. So, you go with the outfit you think society will approve of, the one that makes you look like a girl that has fun, but not too much fun, and sensible, but not conservative. Society tells us, girls, that we don't need makeup to look pretty, but that we look ugly without it. The girl who spends hours in the morning filling in her brows and staining her lips becomes fake. But do you really think that she bought those 75 lipstick colors for you? The girl that wears no makeup becomes ugly just because she didn't take the time to color herself in. Society tells us that when someone looks at you, it shouldn't look like you tried too hard, so we spend hours every day to get that natural look. We get told, "Lose weight. You're much too fat." And, "Oh, my God, you're so skinny. You must be anorexic." Society makes us uncomfortable with the bodies that we were born into. I will not apologize for weighing what I weigh or not having that hourglass figure that society says is essential to look hot. I will not apologize for being a girl with emotions. I will not apologize for being a girl that can take a hit. I will not apologize for being a girl that doesn't wear makeup. I will not apologize for being a girl. Thank you.
My name is Ethan Siopush. I am in eighth grade at Orca K eight, and this is called "Today's Dream." Fifty-three years ago, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. gave his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. In that time, he was referring to the mass racism towards African-Americans across our nation. In my eyes, the biggest problems we have in the world today are injustice and judgment. These are the reasons that young people across America are ashamed of who they are. These are the reasons that there is such a thing as white privilege. These are the reasons that black men across our nation are being murdered without cause. Injustice and judgment, they go hand in hand. Judgment is the cause of some of the biggest social issues in the world, such as sexism, racism, ageism, and homophobia. Now, eventually, these social issues begin to turn into physical injustices. First, you judge, thinking you know someone even if you truly do not. Second, you change your actions based on that one singular judgment. Right now, if a white man in the audience were to pull out a gun and shoot 20 people, police would arrive on scene and do their best to calm him down using words. However, if he was African-American or Middle Eastern, would that be the same story? I do not think so. Remember Tamir Rice? The 12-year-old black boy was shot and killed seconds after police arrived on scene of his crime. My grandfather moved to America from Tehran, Iran many years ago. He faced countless challenges due to his race, as would I, if my skin did not make me look like the average white teen. I am able to hide behind my skin. Many people cannot, but the truth is, no one should have to. Solving this problem is much, much easier said than done. We, as a society, must always be 100% aware of how we are seeing one another. We must be able to look at each other and see human beings and think nothing more. We must learn to recognize our differences and to honor them. Our differences should be what make us special and unique, not what drag us down and tear us apart. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rena Matisia. I'm in sixth grade, and I go to South Shore. The title of my piece is untitled. People think it's okay to sit down and laugh at Donald Trump all day, while he thinks it's okay to talk about how he's going to send Muslims back where they came from and diss black people and objectify women in each and every way. People don't realize how they failed the education system and say, "No child left behind." But yet, they're about 10, sitting in class, thinking they're going to fail the rest of their life because they failed almost every test they took, because the education system is so messed up. People think it's the norm to listen to the radio, and here they will objectify women in each and every way. People think it's ordinary to arrest smart boys for building clocks, and just because he's Muslim, they accuse him for being a bum. People think it's not cruel to laugh at Stray and Shrewd and how they killed all the Indians when they arrived, but it wasn't even their land to begin with. Yet, people think it's justified how KKK stood up and blew up the church with those pretty little black girls in there. People think it's cool to walk down the hallway and act up and cuss and drop people's books because they're about that hood life, that thug life. People think it's okay to do this and continue doing this, but yet, they don't want to change because they're afraid of getting arrested. People think it's okay to walk down the street with their pants halfway down to the knees, and then the police think it's okay to racial profile them so they have to say, "Hands up, don't shoot." And this is the America we choose to live in. When they saw Mike Brown and Trayvon Martin get killed, they thought that that was mandatory because those cops are white. But it won't be okay until we realize where we're standing, on top of the bones of the blacks, on top of the bones of the Hispanics, on top of the bones of the Native Americans, on top of the bones who fought just to speak. Thank you.
We want to, on the behalf of WeApp Young Artists Academy and our parents who are here today, to thank you for allowing us to share our voices. I often say that we advocate and speak on the behalf of our children, but our children are quite capable of speaking for themselves. So, I hope this isn't the last opportunity for us to come and be a part of a board meeting or at your schools or in your communities, because our children are healing through their voices. So, thank you. You can find us at, I have business cards. I'll leave them. I would love for you to stay connected and support the work we're doing in our school district.
Thank you so much. That was amazing. So, can we give them another hand? And actually, would like for them to please come up and just say your first name again so we can all remember.
My name is Naima.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ethan.
My name is Rena Matisia.
My name is Kira.
Thank you so much. This is such a treat. It's also motivating for the rest of us. Thank you so much. We would love to have you come back again soon. Have a great one. And thank you. What is your name again?
My name is Toya Taylor.
Thank you, Toya Taylor, for really doing a wonderful job. Thank you. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Nyland for his comments.
Thank you. Thanks for the great presentation by our students, and thanks for, Dwayne Jack, for joining us today. Recognitions tonight. Maybe we'll... Oh, there she is, hiding in the back. All right. So, we want to recognize tonight that Mia Williams is with us, principal at Aki Karosi, and recognized recently, very recently, last week by the Association of Washington School Principals as the Middle School Principal of the Year for the State of Washington. We'll bring you up front here in just a minute and have you, let the board congratulate you and take your picture. But Mia is certainly the proud principal at Aki Karosi and kind of a tremendous success story for Aki, Denny, and Mercer, working together in a partnership with great commitment, dedication by staff, and great ownership by students and great leadership. They are part of the eight schools that we've identified as being positive outliers, that we continue to look for opportunities to learn from them about what works and how they make good things happen for students year in, year out. And so, we think the recognition is very, very well-deserved. Mia also had the opportunity to represent Seattle Schools at a White House event not long ago, and so, proud of Mia in many regards. So, Mia, come on up front, and we'll invite the board to come down and congratulate you. use of data. And so, they've got their principal offices with student data up there, and they know where each student is, and they know what the next target is for that student. And they've got a great partnership with City Year and have folders that have the students' work there. And so, the City Year people come in after school, the students stay after school, the City Year people pull the file out. They know exactly what the teachers have been working on in the regular classroom and continue that good work. So, it is exciting to see the good work that all of our schools are doing, led by Aki and by Mia's leadership. Ernestine Anderson, famed jazz singer, passed away last week at 87. She graduated from Garfield High School, after which she went on tour with Lionel Hampton's Orchestra. Recognized throughout her life and her career, she released six albums, nominated for four Grammys, performed all over the world, including the Kennedy Center, Carnegie Hall, the inauguration for President Dwight D. Eisenhower, and continued to come back to Garfield to perform with the Garfield High School Jazz Ensemble. So, great loss and a great tribute to Garfield students, and Garfield just does such a great job of showcasing and promoting those who have gone before as an example to the students who are there today. Some of the current staffing issue, current issues that are before us, one of those is staffing. We're in the process of doing budgets for this coming year. Staffing information and budget information is out in the schools, and the schools are working diligently the last week or so and this week, putting together their staffing plans and their budget plans for next year. One of the challenges that we're coming to realize is that, there's good news. The legislature is making more primary teachers available, roughly one per elementary building last year or current, for this year, and then one more teacher for next year. As we've discussed here before, that's a challenge for us in that we have to then find space, and some places, we don't have that space. So, facilities is scrambling to find portables or find other accommodations for space in those buildings that are very, very close to being out of space. And then, this will make major, major, major changes in the way that we assign staff. Historically, we've used a formula to give staffing to elementary schools, and then the principals have worked with their staff to allocate staff. And probably, a little smaller class sizes at the primary level, but pretty equal from K through five. The new state funding is targeted specifically at primary grades, and the state, I suppose, is a little, I don't know what a good word would be. They want to make sure that we use the staff the way that they intended, and so, they're holding us accountable for putting the teachers where they designated them. So, that means that we will need to staff primary classrooms at around 20 students, and we'll need to staff intermediate classes at around 27 students. So, that will create a much bigger difference between primary grades and intermediate grades. In addition, we're expected to meet our targets grade by grade, and so, that probably means that we will have far more multi-age split classrooms at the primary level going into next year. So, we're still trying to figure out what the state requirements are, and we obviously applaud the smaller class sizes and the addition of much-needed teachers to lower class size, but it does seem to come with some consequences and some challenges. Smart goal number four that the board has approved for superintendent evaluation is around early hiring. HR has set a target of hiring 215 teachers early before we absolutely, positively know exactly where the openings are. And what does it say? They've made contingent offers to 197 teachers, of which 157 have accepted. Many of those are in high-need areas, special education, bilingual, and then we're doing early hiring in elementary where we always have, we know that we have a large number of openings each year. Several more career fairs to go, but HR is well on track to meet their goal, and particularly for those areas that are hard to fill, that's really good news. They're also doing work on recruiting teachers of color and trying to figure out how we can do that creatively through promoting the programs that we have, and they're doing some interesting things with social media and virtual recruiting. Bell times. The school board, not too long ago, approved the bell time plan for this coming year, which allows us to start high schools later in the day as far as biorhythms and later starts for kind of the improved learning for high schools. and we support them in that to get good participation out for those community conversations. We do now know that the conversation, well, we knew it was around education. We now know that it's around education and closing the opportunity gap. So that's what people will be being asked. They'll be asked when they come to those events, what are the things that are causing those gaps for students? What are some things that the district could do? What are some things that the city could do? Kristen Bailey Fogarty, a teacher at X9 Middle School, is one of the co-chairs. President Patu and I are on the advisory committee of about 30 or 40 people along with Phyllis Campano, who's here in the audience, and I think three of our district or school administrators. So we're fairly well represented on that group, and that group is committed to meet every month or maybe every, twice a month from now through July with the idea of coming up with some pragmatic suggestions and solutions for closing the opportunity gap. With regard to the district's work to close the opportunity gap, which is smart goal two, the district will be hosting a series of community meetings around our efforts to close the gap for African-American males and other students of color. We're going to be doing that through the Neighbor to Neighbor program and working with some of our task forces, advisory teams, partners in our community to get feedback on the plan that we have underway and how we can partner with others in that endeavor. The focus of our work has been around three things. Positive beliefs. Do we believe that each and every student absolutely, positively has greatness in them and that we can work with them to help pull that talent out? Second, can we build great relationships and move beyond behavior issues to work on social, emotional issues and make sure that there's a warm welcome and a sense of belonging for each of our students? And then thirdly, can we know each student by their name and their strengths and the needs and then teach to that so that we close gaps early and help them be successful? This last week was Classified Appreciation Week, and I had the opportunity to go out and visit with quite a few of our labor groups throughout the district, had the opportunity to meet with SEA groups, PAS groups, Teamster groups, and SEA groups here at the John Stanford Center, and then went out and visited some schools with some of the labor leaders. Some of the things that I found out, Transportation has a big board up, whiteboard, with lots of data on it. One piece of data was that for February, their buses were 97.7% on time, and they told me that they drove 25,000 miles per month. So, once around the world every, well, it's not every month, it's every day. There we go. Yeah, do my math right here. In the warehouse, they're working hard on cross-functional teams, and they have 15 people that make deliveries for us and have a great track record of getting materials out to the schools as quickly as possible once they get delivered here. And they help work with Nutrition Services to deliver 22,000 breakfasts and lunches each day. And found out that our Nutrition Services is the second-largest provider of food service in the Northwest, second only to Joint Base Lewis McCord. So lots of, actually, I did that last year, got to go through the food service piece and saw how they go into high-production mode starting at 4:00 in the morning to get those breakfasts and lunches ready to be sent out. And then right outside of the foyer here, had the opportunity to visit with security and see new fingerprinting, no more ink electronically, and then a lot of the ways that they're tied in with the city. So they've got a big monitor up there that shows the location for each one of our schools with a little half-mile circle around it, and instantaneously if there's an incident in Seattle Police Department, it comes up on the screen, and so they know right away where it is, how close to a school it is, and then can have the conversations with the Police Department about having our students shelter, lockdown, or make sure that we are working on their safety. One of the major parts of our work this last year has been with regard to sexual assault prevention, and we've had quite a few parts of our work underway. We've redone our policies and procedures both for Title IX sexual assault as well as for field trips. We've opened up an Office of Civil Rights internally so that we can be training, taking preventative steps, and implementing our procedures. And we've been working with our task force to implement many of their recommendations, one of which will be Communications Home to Parents in April with regard to some of the things that families can do to help keep all of our students safe. So I'd like to invite Clover Cott, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and John Hafaker, Executive Director, to give us an update on some of the things that are underway, some of the things that are completed, and how we're trying to make sure that we're preventing and keeping our students safe.
Good evening, Director Superintendent Clover Cott, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
John Hafaker, Executive Director for the Northwest Region.
So we're here to provide you an update on the annual report required under Policy 3208. Board Policy 3208 requires that the superintendent make an annual report to the board. Board Policy 3208 states that the superintendent shall make an annual report reviewing the use and efficacy of this policy and related procedures. Recommendations for changes to this policy, if applicable, shall be included in the report. The superintendent is encouraged to involve staff, students, and volunteers, and parents in the review process. The district's policies and procedures for sexual harassment and assault are located in Policy 3208 and Superintendent Procedures 3208 SP. The superintendent's annual report, which is typically due in August, will be submitted to the Operations Committee on April 21st, 2016. The annual report to the board under Policy 3208 is different than the annual reporting requirements of Superintendent Procedure 3208 SP. Under 3208 SP, the Title IX Coordinator and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources submit reports to the superintendent discussing in more detail the number and types of sexual assault cases reported, the steps taken to disseminate information about sexual harassment, and the training provided to students and staff. The superintendent did receive an interim report from the Title IX Interim Title IX Compliance Officer on May 29th, 2015. There have been several updates provided to the school board and community regarding the district's work related to the Policy 3208 and associated superintendent procedures under 3208 SP. On August 2015, at an Operations Committee meeting, Deputy Superintendent Ben Charles Wright distributed the May 29th, 2015 interim report of the Seattle Public Schools Task Force for Prevention of and Response to Sexual Harassment and Sexual Assault. He also provided the May 29th, 2015 interim Title IX Coordinator's interim report, and he also provided the July 30th, 2015 addendum to the interim report of Seattle Schools Task Force for Prevention and Response to Sexual Harassment and Sexual Assault. He then went on to provide an overview of each of those documents. There were four updates provided in the Friday Superintendent Memos to the board. Those memo, memos were provided by Deputy Superintendent Charles Wright and include December 4th, 2015, an update regarding the annual report required under 3208, and the Task Force Prevention of and Response to Sexual Harassment and Sexual Assault work that was underway. December 18th, an update on and a copy of the December 9th final report of the Task Force. On January 8th, 2016, an update regarding changes to the superintendent procedure under 3208 SP and the communication and process used to include and inform the staff regarding the revisions to 3208 SP. And then again, on January 29th, 2016, an update regarding the hiring of a permanent, full-time Title IX Coordinator and the district's response to the Task Force final report. On January 21st, 2016, the Operations Committee, Kelly Schmidt, the district's new Student Civil Rights Compliance Officer, described the work of the new Office of Student Civil Rights and the revisions to 3208 SP, and reviewed the district's response to recommendations made by the Task Force. In addition to keeping the school board and community updated regarding the efforts to comply with Board Policy 3208, the superintendent and the district have taken several steps to ensure that students and staff have access to an education and work environment free from discrimination, including sexual harassment. In November 2014, the district convened the Task Force. The Task Force consisted of a multidisciplinary team, including four principals, one teacher, two parents, two students, three sexual assault experts, two specialists, one classified employee, and one district staff person. The Task Force charter required the group to produce two reports, an interim report and a final report. Both reports contain recommendations that are intended to move the district beyond mere legal compliance with Title IX. In October of 2015, the district opened a Student Civil Rights Compliance Office and hired Kelly Schmidt to lead that office. The office includes an accessibility coordinator who started in November 2015, a full-time Title IX Compliance Officer who started in January 2016, and another full-time person will be hired to respond to other types of harassment, intimidation, and bullying to begin March 2016. In July 2015, the district convened, excuse me, the district convened a joint team made up of PAS, Risk Management, Executive Directors, Department of Technology Services, Policy, and our Communications Department to redesign the field trip procedures and processes for supervision and oversight. The district adopted a revised Sexual Harassment Procedure 3208 SP in December of 2015. The information that I'm sharing tonight will be expanded upon in a written annual report and shared with the board on the April 21st at the Operations Committee meeting. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to John Hafaker, the Executive Director of the Northwest Region, to provide an update on the field trip processes and procedures, and then we will answer any questions that you have after that.
Good evening, or afternoon still, but still getting that daylight savings time figured out again. Thank you, Dr. Cott, and as mentioned in her report, the work that I'm going to share with you is work that we've been doing to strengthen our field trip processes, procedures, as well as just the transparency around field trips, both internally and externally for our community outside of the working staff down here. As mentioned, work began in July of 2015 with a joint team coming together. Erin Bennett and PAS, Risk Management, the Executive Directors, and our senior administrative assistants, who primarily do a lot of the background work related to the field trips as they come in. Department of Technology staff, Policy and Procedure, and Communications all came together to meet and look at the current system that we had in place and the ways that staff accessed the field trip process and try to make it usable in basic terms. In our work, we look to reduce redundancies, to streamline the application and approval process, to strengthen the supervision plans, and especially those that relate to overnight and out-of-state and our international trips. We also were working to, as much as possible, create transparency, both for the staff internally as well as, as I mentioned, our families and community. Our work was reviewed multiple times by PAS, by legal, by risk management, and by external consultants that we consulted with who are familiar with both field trips and supervision plans. And in the end, we presented our work twice to the entire principal corps as well as senior leadership, both in December and then again at the March Learning Leadership Day, and we went live two weeks ago. We are going to now flip over, and I think you can see it on your monitors, to take you into what the new website looks like. Hopefully, it comes up here in a second. It does work for the public out there. All right, technical difficulties on our end on that side, but I encourage you, and it's an easy thing to do now. So during the work, we developed a two-phase plan. The work is broken, so we would not do something that we had to then go back and undo completely once we actually implemented Phase Two. What you're seeing right now is Phase One of that plan. Key points, and this is, again, I encourage you to take a look at this. For the first time ever, F in the guides actually stands for field trips. There's a clear access point from inside and outside the website. In prior times, you had to go through trying to find it through Risk Management and dig further and further into it. If you were lucky, you found links to some of the forms and other pieces. We've cleaned that up entirely. If you click in and type in "field trips" in the search engine, it'll take you right to that site. If you're external, if you're a parent and you want to know how field trips work, you can get there. Internal, you can get there. There's a single page now that has a clear tab format to it. If you were to look at it, you would see four clear tabs, one for a local field trips, one for overnight field trips, one for international, and then one that's a clear link to resources. The clear process is on each tab, and it ramps up as you move along the tabs, so that they become more and more complex related to the trips that you're trying to take. So a single day is a fairly simple process. The international one's clearly much more complex, but it's the same process as you work your way along. The Resource tab has clear links to additional resources and supports. Resources are also dynamic, with sample documents to be replaced using exemplars from distinguished trips and trip planners. We pulled in a number of documents from people who've been doing it right for a long time, and we use those to build the resources that we were putting out to people, and we made it very clear in terms of the layout so that you can see, if you're looking for how to do a trip to Thailand, the documents are there to allow you to actually do it and do it safely. And again, the Clear Supervision Plan is now part of the processes and documents with key timelines and expectations. This was a piece that the outside consult that we worked with recommended that we build, and we ran it by them a number of times in order to make sure that what we were putting together was a plan that would be successful for our principals, as well as the trip leader who actually leaves the building, to make sure they had a plan in advance for the students, how they were going to support them during the event, whatever it is, as well as in the cases of overnight and out-of-state, how they were going to monitor their safety and well-being, not just during the time that they're with them, but at those times where they're, you know, doing other things along the way overnight, et cetera. Phase Two is in the pipeline now and will help us move to a truly automated planning, submission, and approval and tracking process. Right now, we still have a lot of pieces that have to come into us and get printed and sent back and forth, but that's the next piece, is to get the automation piece, and DOTS is part of the work that's going to help us with that. So with that, if there are any questions?
Any questions? Comments? Dr. Earl Harris?
One of the things that came up in the quarterly audit meeting last night was having the statements of what one's rights are with respect to harassment, and how does that actually make it into each of the student handbooks throughout the district? Are the executive directors taking a look at that and crossing the T, dotting the I, so that we have that information in the hands of every family in the district?
We do send out, as a district, we send out the rights and responsibilities and all the documents associated with that on an annual basis. Within each individual school handbook, those are kind of a site-by-site determination of what they put in, but again, we send out those. Those key documents are sent home at the start of school by every school.
I guess what I'm asking is the accountability piece that makes sure that that is in fact in every handbook in the Seattle School District. Who checks that off?
I don't know that that accountability has existed, but I'm sure it will be part of our planning going forward. and well-being, not just during the time that they're with them, but at those times where they're, you know, doing other things along the way overnight, et cetera. Phase Two is in the pipeline now and will help us move to a truly automated planning, submission, and approval and tracking process. Right now, we still have a lot of pieces that have to come into us and get printed and sent back and forth, but that's the next piece, is to get the automation piece, and DOTS is part of the work that's going to help us with that. So with that, if there are any questions?
Any questions, comments? Director Harris?
One of the things that came up in the quarterly audit meeting last night was having the statements of what one's rights are with respect to harassment, and how does that actually make it into each of the student handbooks throughout the district? Are the executive directors taking a look at that and crossing the T, dotting the I, so that we have that information in the hands of every family in the district?
We do send out, as a district, we send out the rights and responsibilities and all the documents associated with that on an annual basis. Within each individual school handbook, those are kind of a site-by-site determination of what they put in. But again, we send out those, those key documents are sent home at the start of school by every school.
I guess what I'm asking is the accountability piece that makes sure that that is, in fact, in every handbook in the Seattle School District. Who checks that off?
I don't know that that accountability has existed, but I'm sure it will be part of our planning going forward.
Thank you.
So I continue to hear from schools that the amount of paperwork associated with field trips is pretty extensive and somewhat onerous. So anything you can do to streamline that and make it less of a burden for everybody without losing the important content, I strongly would support.
I believe we're on the same page on that exactly. As a parent myself and having had to fill out many a form, I would agree with that. We have really worked hard with Risk Management and others to make sure we have the necessary pieces of paper there and to streamline as much as possible, so that you only have to fill it out once, and those kind of pieces. As I said, Phase Two is where we really can get to an automated system that will cut down on a lot of that, but right now, we still are in back and forth on some pieces. If we could show you, and I'm sure, again, I would say, please take a look at it. If you look at the field trip forms that we're now using, that are now live, they are much simpler to work with. They are actually more comprehensive for the principal to review, but it is a better process for us to get the trip approved and moving forward. And really, again, our emphasis is the same as yours, to reduce as much of that paperwork as possible while still keeping our kids safe.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you.
I want to thank all of the team. They've put in a lot of time to make this better, trying to balance the paperwork versus the need to actually be compliant and do what we need to do. A few more items to comment on. OSBI was here this week, along with representatives of the federal government, to do their quarterly overview for special education. This is now kind of moving toward the end of our second year of being, I guess, getting technical assistance now from those individuals, but have built some good relationships over the last two years. And so OSBI comes out, and they've been doing region-by-region visits to buildings in each region around our school district. They've been doing focus groups with parents, and they've been inquiring on a variety of things that we've agreed to do in the MOU. Are our IEPs on time? Are we delivering the services that we promised through the IEPs? What's the experience of our parents? And a variety of other issues that are in the MOU. So we've had, well, all of the visits are now scheduled. We're well over half of the visits completed, and so far, the visits that we began with have resulted in a return of the funding that was withheld from us last year. So a lot of good learning along the way and a lot of improvements along the way. OSBI did comment on the fact that a year ago, 47% of the complaints regarding special education at the state level were from Seattle, and were about 5% of the state population. And this year, 5% of the complaints to OSBI are from Seattle, which tracks with the number of students that we have in the district. We had lively meeting with our Native American representatives a few weeks ago, and we revisited the issue of how do we get out of data reporting the information that we need? So there was a lot of conversation around what the federal government requires, what the state government requires, the 57 entries that are currently in the menu that we have to provide to the state. And I'm told that we had another follow-up meeting today, and I think that we've made a breakthrough in trying to figure out how we can comply with the state and federal regulations. Part of the problem is that if you comply with the state, federal regulations, you might check a box like "other," in which case then your underlying ethnicity as a Native American would be currently lost in our system, making it very hard for those who work in our Native American program to go and find students that might need services or students that might qualify for additional funding. So I'm excited that, our team is excited, and they think that they found a way to do what we need to do to make everybody happy and get the data that we need. Also met end of last week with the PTSA, Seattle Council. They have an event coming up on April 4. They've invited several departments here from the John Stanford Center to be there and make a quick two-minute pitch on why you want to know more, and then they'll be stationed around the outside of this room and available for Q and A from representatives from each of the PTSAs in the district. They're also helping us build awareness for an upcoming family survey that we've been working on, and as always, challenged with how do we get that information out to parents in many different formats. Many prefer it, and we can send it electronically. For others, we have to mail it. So we're working on getting that information out here in the next few weeks. As part of Classified Appreciation Week, I met with the staff here at the John Stanford Center, a couple of meetings this last week. Thank you to Director Harris for being there. Continuing with our theme with regard to customer service, we had staff kind of recognize each other for some of the good work that they're doing, kind of get them involved in the process. One of the things moving forward that we'll be working on is asking each division, each department, to set their standards for how they are meeting the customer service expectations. Who answers the phone? Who gets back to them? What's our standard for getting back to those who call with questions? So a lot of good conversations in those sessions. And finally, some good news. Hazel Wolf K-8 has won an international award for building design, recognized in the World Architecture News, and they came in second to a Brazil project, and were said to be extremely close. So we'll have a ribbon-cutting celebration at the start of school in September, and kind of the more important part is that we'll have a great new school for students to serve our students, and nice to have the recognition as well. Hazel Wolf K-8 students have also been active in doing some community fundraising. One of their classes, a class of autistic students, has helped raise $2,900 to buy a tiny house for Othello Village, part of the tent city for our homeless. So kudos to them. We had several, the windstorms just continue, so we've had a couple of bouts now. We had Northgate that was out for a while, they came back on. Jane Adams was out for an extended period of time, and the staff did a good job with some support here to figure out how to accommodate the number of students and figure out, how do you serve breakfast when you have no power? And then McGilver, this last week, we had challenges as well. Pacific Lutheran University has awarded their President's Scholarship to an Ingram student, Carissa Liao. 600 applicants turned in, applications, and the average GPA was 3.98. So she did well to be recognized. It comes with a scholarship worth $25,000 a year and puts her in the running for a next round of scholarships that might double that amount of money. So congratulations to Carissa, who graduates in June. CNN filmed at Garfield High School today, revisiting a story that they had done before titled "Where They Are Now." It was a story related to the sixth anniversary of the Affordable Care Act. Marcellus Owens, a student at Garfield, was at the White House for the signing a while back and was featured in the news. His mother was recognized at the time as one who had not had insurance and had passed away before the Affordable Healthcare Act was available. And then I commented last time on the Cleveland STEM Award, that they've received $20,000, and they'll be designated as a STEM lighthouse, and the money is for them, as well as for them to act as a lighthouse for other technology schools in the area that want to come find out more about what they're doing. They were featured in a King Five profile this week. And finally, I would say thank you to Assistant Superintendent Ken Gotch. He's been leading our business and finance section and has made a decision to move back to Chicago to support his parents. So we very much appreciate and will miss the stability that he brought to the district and kind of the hard work, can-do attitude that he's brought to the leadership team. So best wishes to Ken, and thank you for a great service to Seattle Schools. That concludes my remarks.
I too would like to say thank you so much to Ken for all the work that he's done, and he has brought a lot of stability, sustainability for the Seattle Public Schools. So thank you and good luck as you go back to Chicago. Again, welcome to Dwayne Jack, a senior at Middle College at Northgate. His tribal affiliation is Nuksek and Koijin. He is interested in a career in culinary arts. He is a board member of the Urban Native Education Alliance. He is a star student and student leader at Middle College at Northgate. Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Jack. If you would like to provide your comments, now would be a good time. You don't have any comments tonight?
No.
Okay, well. Well, thank you for joining our board tonight. We have now reached the consent portion of tonight's agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director Blandford?
I'd like to remove item four from the consent agenda.
So we want to read the motion. So before, we are now going to, before we remove the consent, we need to first take a vote for the remaining of the consent agenda items. Is that correct? Am I doing that right? Motion first. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, all right. Okay, I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Consent agenda has passed.
As amended.
As amended. Okay. Now Sue will read. So Sue will read the motion. Isn't he supposed to speak to that?
I think we're here. Just. Does that move to a agenda? But you have to read the motion first.
We should consider, I think we should consider items.
All right, this motion is McDonald International School 2016-17 Annual Fund for Language Immersion. No, it's not what I just said. There we go. All right. It is item four, Kids in the Middle Grant from the Nash Home Family Foundation. Approval of this item will authorize a superintendent. Okay, here's the motion. I move that the board authorize a superintendent to accept the Kids in the Middle Grant funds from the Nash Home Family Foundation in the amount of $531,655.
I second.
All those in favor? No. Oh, okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on this item? Director Blandford?
I'm sorry for all of the chaos associated with this. It is not deserved in the sense that the only thing I wanted to do is to make sure that we make note of the fact that the Nash Home Foundation has been involved with Seattle Public Schools for 14 years now and has contributed, if I read the bar correctly, $6.1 million, and has been responsible for a lot of the schools that are up on that list of high-performing schools. And so I thought it was important to appreciate the foundation for their generosity and for their smart investments they have made. In my experience with Seattle Public Schools, they've made smart investments that have helped those schools to accomplish the goals that have been set and the recognition that they've received. So I thought it was important to not just have this be something that doesn't get recognition as many of our items on the consent agenda do. So it was just, it was less to make any changes to the language and just for that recognition
Thank you, Ms. Fode, roll call.
Director Peters?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blandford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
So what do we do now? I move for the approval of the minutes.
All right, since it's after 5:00, we are now going to move into public testimony. But before we do that, we want to remind you of the rules. And then also, before that, I also want to note that starting at April 6, board meeting, public testimony will be scheduled to begin at 5:30 PM instead of the current time of 5:00. The rules for public testimony are on the screen, and I would ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I would note that the board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff. I would also like to note that each speaker has a two-minute speaking time. When the two minutes have ended, please conclude your remarks. So I will read the first three names. Jessica Nakamatsu, Phyllis Campana, and Lauren Hip.
Sorry, when you're short. Good evening, school board members and Dwayne. My name is Jessica K. Nakamatsu. I am currently a high school senior attending Middle College at Northgate. I started out as a student at Roosevelt High School. Now, don't get me wrong, Roosevelt is a great school, but it wasn't the right fit for me. I couldn't handle a six-period schedule where I had to speedwalk around a crowd of 1,700 students inside a giant school building just to get to my next class on time. Combined with my ability to get sick easily, which forced me to stay home and fall further behind, along with the large amounts of homework I received due to being sick, caused me to need severe anxiety, and also dealing with the stress of being my ill-and-dying mother's caretaker, I was definitely failing academically. I even ended up taking my freshman year over again, with only minimal improvement in my grades the following year. I was directed to Middle Colleges, into Middle Colleges' direction during the summer credit retrieval program. I took this summer program two years in a row, plus another year at Roosevelt, in order to earn enough credits to qualify for entry into Middle College. I lost my mother in the process, dying of health complications caused by type 2 diabetes. I ended up just falling even further and deeper into this downward spiral, where I only had a handful of supports left by my side. I joined Middle College at the start of the 2014-2015 school year. This school changed my educational perspective. I walked into school every day only to be greeted by a small, supportive community of staff and students working hard together in order to achieve our own academic goals. I was given a second chance in my education. I not only got back on track to graduating, which will happen for me this June, but I was able to partake in a variety of opportunities that most high school students, most high schoolers don't even get a chance to participate in. schoolers don't even get a chance to participate in. These opportunities have opened quite a few doors for me. The curriculum focuses more on obtaining practical life skills along with mastery-based core and elective subject classes. We remember and retain what we've learned. In closing, Middle College is a school that has made an impact not just in my life, but also the lives of many other students, mainly those who are considered at risk. We accept everyone regardless of their situations and circumstances. We work with them, accommodating around their schedules just so they can earn that diploma and moving them forward, even further forward in their lives. For a school to have a 100% graduation rate and to have most all students enter some form of post-secondary education after they graduate, I strongly believe that Middle College deserves some more support and a huge round of applause for their hard work and their dedication. Let's all keep Middle College going strong, and soon enough, there will be a generation of students where there will be no such thing as a high school dropout. Thank you very much for listening. No, that's not going to work. Okay. Good evening, school board members. My name is Phyllis Campano, and I'm a special education teacher and the vice president of Seattle Education Association. In 2013, myself and another educator representing SEA went with Seattle Public Schools, community organizations, and city officials to visit Boston and Jersey City to visit their preschool programs, which are now the models for Seattle's program. I went because I truly believe that quality early intervention is essential for all of our students. One of the biggest takeaways that we had in that trip was that the students in the preschools run by the public schools made more gains than the students in the community organizations. We have the structure here in Seattle to provide the jumpstart for our students to close the opportunity at an early age. You've heard from educators at Seattle Elementary. The educators can pick out the students that had quality pre-K by their abilities to manage their bodies so that they can learn. You've heard from educators at Arbor Heights about the struggles of students, the struggles of our students who have experienced significant trauma in their early lives and the need for early intervention to help them be successful. You've heard from educators in the existing pre-K programs who are collaborating with kindergarten teachers. They are attending staff meetings. They have fourth-grade reading buddy programs. Those pre-K programs are part of those communities. Increasing the number of pre-K programs run by Seattle Public Schools will not only help more students, will only help more students. So let's not hesitate to talk, take the opportunity to close the opportunity gap. We here in Seattle Public Schools are the best people to provide that experience for our kids, so we all need to step up. Please vote yes on the preschool.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Lauren Hip, and I'm with Moms Rising. We are a grassroots organization of over a million members nationwide with over 40,000 in Washington State. I'm also a mom of a toddler and a resident of Seattle, and I know firsthand how difficult it is to find affordable early learning in the city. In fact, many Seattle families have to forego preschool due to the high cost or lack of availability, with Washington ranking 10th worst in the nation for access to affordable care for preschoolers. This could have devastating consequences because preschool has been shown to close the opportunity gap among low-income and children of color. Leading economists agree that the investments in high-quality early learning saves future dollars by eight to one. Studies also show that children who have high-quality early learning experiences are more likely to succeed in school, graduate from high school, gain stable employment, and are less likely to be arrested. Yet many of these Seattle children will not have the opportunity to participate in these programs with these potentially life-changing outcomes unless you act now. Tonight, you have the power to expand access to preschool by voting in support of the Seattle preschool program by maintaining existing and expanding to new classrooms. At Moms Rising, we urge you to do so for families across the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Bancroft. Alyssa Jacobs. Shelley Hurley.
I'm the grandfather of a child who will be eligible for the Seattle preschool program in two years, as well as the father of two graduates of Seattle Public Schools. I think you have a unique opportunity tonight to serve 80 more children in Seattle preschool program in addition to the 60 currently being served. And these will be children who will come off the waitlist for Head Start and E-CAP or families who are too rich for Head Start because they earn more than $25,000 but not affluent enough to pay for preschool themselves. I'd like to focus on just a couple of specific issues. The issue of the timing of payments from the city to the school district is a red herring. Many of the other district funding sources have much more difficult funding requirements. I'll name two, the USDA School Lunch Program. Every lunch has to be counted, every menu checked before the district gets a penny from those funding sources, and if there's any mistakes, it has to be paid back. By contrast, the city is giving the school district 75% of the funding upfront and the remaining funding at payment points. My understanding is, to date, all of the payments have been made on time because the requirements are things like that teachers meet their professional development requirements. And the city, the school district also has a reserve fund in case these payments ever weren't made. So I think that's a, that's a red herring. In addition, I think that the Seattle preschool program and the district are working well on the serving children with special needs, which is a high priority for both groups, and that those be worked out quite easily in the future. So I ask you to vote against the amendment and for the main resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Jacobs in support of the pre-K, and I cede my spot to Kristen Lee.
Hello, my name is Kristen Lay, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Van Assel Elementary School, which is one of the sites of the preschool. So I've been coming to visit the preschool during my PCP time to interact with some of my future kindergarteners, and I cannot tell you that this is, how much this is such a benefit for my students, my future kindergarteners, and for me as well, because we get to know each other and they get to see who their future teacher will be, and I will get to see who my students are before they enter kindergarten. And in the past, it's always been a scary thing to teach kindergarten because you didn't get to know who your students were. You had no idea. It was a mystery, and it was something that was very unpredictable. And so because of this preschool, I can easily walk over to see who they are, who they are as individuals holistically, and I can plan how to better serve my students, my future students, based on observing their behavior, how they've grown socially from being in a preschool, and of course, most importantly, their academics. So now I'm going to switch gears and tell you about how I've been interacting with one of the wonderful little preschoolers at Van Assel. He has tons of energy. He is very wiggly, and he has grown so much ever since he's been in preschool. There are four different dialects of Cantonese spoken in his home, so you can probably imagine that he is processing quadruple times, and so oftentimes, he's in his own world. Because he has the preschool, he now knows how to socialize. He is exposed to being in a classroom with other students, and that is something that's very consistent and that's going to be very helpful for his growth. Please support the preschool. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shelley Hurley, and I'm a special ed teacher. I'm also the chair for SEA on the partnership committee, which is involved in closing the opportunity gap and equity. And I am here today, and I could sit up here and spout all sorts of numbers again about why preschool is good and why we should have it. And to tell you the truth, I am quite surprised that I was asked to come and speak again about this because I spoke about it last year. And to me, this is one of those things where it's kind of a duh kind of a thing. As educators, we know that early intervention is best. We also know that there are families in Seattle Public Schools that cannot afford preschool. If we have the opportunity as a school district to make sure that those kids get what they need so that they are then able to enter kindergarten ready to go, I do not understand why we have to come down here again and ask you to vote yes on this again. I don't understand why we have to come down and say, please open more. To me, this is just something that should happen. It is what is best for children. And with that, I'm going to cede the rest of my time to David Sandler.
Thank you, Shelley. David Sandler, physical therapist assistant, 10th year with the district. I have 25 seconds. I sent an email to the board saying I support this, even though it is a stopgap measure because we don't tax the rich and we insist on having a war economy with bases, I think, at over 120 countries in the world. So until we really push to have a more decent way of acting, we have to do this.
Thank you. Chris Jenkins. Casey Osborne-Hitman. Kim McCormick.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the city preschool program agreement, three points. Number one, watching the board's discussions, the situation is reminiscent of charter schools. The rules governing city preschool programs would not be solely under district jurisdiction. Number two, some funds are not reimbursed to the district if certain targets are not met. Number three, in that circumstance, the district would have spent common school funds on non-common school education. As recently ruled by the Supreme Court, to sign an agreement to do so appears to be illegal. On athletic field turf replacement at Franklin, district staff indicated that new studies on safety from contaminants from the filler material won't be available until the end of the year. Please vote no on this contract. On Policy 3246 on the use of reasonable force, please discuss recent changes to the policy. On private funding of language immersion instructional assistance, two points. Number one, for English-speaking students, is the approach of teaching mathematics in a non-English language an easily extendable strategy for closing achievement gaps? Number two, other language immersion schools use public funds meant for ELL, or English-language learning, students. It is my understanding that such funds are required to be spent for the exclusive use of ELL students. Are such funds being properly spent in these programs? On Lowell Heights, please change the plans that would remove 30% of the playground. Thank you.
Casey Osborne-Hitman.
Good evening. My name is Casey Osborne-Hitman. I'm the parent of a 19-month-old Tappan, who really likes your microphone. I live in Director District Five, and I'm also representing Save the Children Action Network. Save the Children Action Network engages an advocacy network of supporters to increase access to quality early learning across the state and across the country. I'm here today to testify in favor of accepting funding through the Seattle preschool program to preserve the three existing classrooms in SPS and expand to four additional sites. In the fall of 2014, only 58% of children in Seattle Public Schools' 31 highest-poverty schools met kindergarten readiness standards for literacy, and only 31% met standards for math. We know that this opportunity gap disproportionately impacts children of color and children from low-income families. High-quality early learning is a proven solution to close the opportunity gap. A study of Chicago's parent-child centers found that children who attended high-quality early learning programs had a 29% higher rate of high school completion, a 41% reduction in special ed placement, and a 40% reduction in the rate of grade retention. My backup. And a 41% reduction in special education placement, and a 40% reduction in the rate of grade retention, among other improved outcomes compared to their peers without the same opportunities. Seattle Public Schools' vision is that every student receives a high-quality 21st century education and graduates prepared for college, career, and life. To make this vision a reality for all students, we need to make sure that high-quality early learning is available to all students. With today's vote, you have the opportunity to help level the playing field for our 140 students. I encourage you to take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim McCormick.
Hi, my name is Kim McCormick, and while I applaud Seattle voters and our state legislators for supporting levies to fund new school capacity, I ask that the planning for the Magnolia and the EC Hughes Building be done transparently and genuinely involve the communities for which they are intended to serve. Several schools will soon receive new buildings to grow into. Other schools are not as fortunate. For example, rather than build a new, larger building to support enrollment growth at John Rogers, the decision was made to open the interim Cedar Park site as an attendance area school. The roll-up method of opening new schools is supported by the NSAP, so we were shocked to learn that plans call for John Rogers students to be reassigned by GeoSplit to Cedar Park in 2017, along with students who will be GeoSplit from Olympic Hills, even though Olympic Hills is receiving a new, larger building. In 2013, John Rogers staff undertook the in-house identification of students who qualified for but were not receiving ELL services. There are now about 70 ELL students at John Rogers, many of whom will be impacted by the GeoSplit to Cedar Park. The plan for Cedar Park does not make sense. It does not balance enrollment upon building capacities. The Cedar Park Walk Zone is not safe, and instead of distributing the region's ELL and free and reduced lunch populations between several schools, it concentrates these students at two schools, Olympic Hills and Cedar Park. The Seattle School Board has directed SPS staff to reexamine the Cedar Park boundaries. Thank you. Community meetings were recently held at John Rogers and Olympic Hills during which the growth boundaries that had been approved in 2013 were presented and feedback was taken. We are looking forward to continuing this discussion at additional meetings this spring. Please learn from the Cedar Park situation when planning for Magnolia and EC Hughes. Please plan transparently and get it right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Okuna. Melissa Westbrook. Matthew O'Connor.
My name is Erin Okuna. I am the executive director of this Southeast Seattle Education Coalition. We are for the pre-K program, and I would like to cede my time to a parent from Bailey Gatsir.
Hi, I'm Joanne Griesmer. I am a parent in the Bailey Gatsir area. My oldest is currently in kindergarten, and last year, he participated in the pre-K, and it was phenomenal. The things that happened in that classroom were magical. I mean, every day, those kids were eager to learn. They were engaged in special activities, and they came home exhausted. And who doesn't want that for their pre-K kids? So, and all those things were just wonderful, but the icing on the cake for us were these were our neighborhood kids. I was anxious to send my child to our neighborhood school, knowing nothing about the building other than their test scores were kind of shady. And so to go into the building and have a positive experience, to learn about the neighborhood, learn about the different cultures, meet kids, develop friendships, and build my child's stamina to learn have all been beneficial. Seeing the benefits this year in kindergarten has been super rich. The kids are friends because they had that last year to practice and engage and do school together. So when they began kindergarten in the fall, they were ready on day one, and that is something that I think is the biggest benefit that isn't measured on any of the tests. And then to also realize that these And then, to also realize that these kids are, sorry, these kids are also wanting more. I mean, there are parents in the halls that are picking up and envious of this program. And the fact that this class is already full at Gatzert, and there are people who are eager and want to sign their kids up and aren't allowed to is heartbreaking. So, please vote for more programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. About the bar for the city pre-K, for the record, I love pre-K. As I said to you when this item was introduced, I hope the district is prudent in what it does to protect itself as well as serving all students whose parents want to access this program. If you want to do that, then vote yes on the amendment. The city says the district is a partner and yet that wants to have a 25% holdback of payments. First of all, the district is a governmental entity with elected oversight. That puts you on a very different basis than other community groups the city is working with. Second, the city says the benchmarks are just some kind of classroom checklist, and it's no problem to fulfill them. Until that checklist changes, and until the district doesn't meet those benchmarks, where, and the Gates Foundation takes its funding away, where will the district get the money? The district should not be getting the money from your reserve. Where is it going to come from? So the only thing is, the city must take that out. Third, the city needs to understand that if they want to operate in the district, then they have to follow federal rules that the district does. That means every child who comes through the door must be welcomed and have their needs met in inclusive classrooms. Passing special ed kids to district pre-Ks is not right, and it makes the district's job harder. Why should some Seattle preschoolers get this wonderful six-hour academic day that the city offers and not others? That is an inequity that should not stand. In summary, if you want to vote yes on this bar, do so, but also vote yes on the amendment. Protect our district's funds and help serve all the preschool children who participate in the city's program within Seattle schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew O'Connor, and I'm a career early childhood educator. Having taught pre-K in kindergarten for six years, three of them here in Seattle Public School District at South Shore Pre-K 8, I've been involved with the Seattle Preschool Program from the beginning, testifying at city council and community meetings myself, and holding parent discussions in the classroom in order to elevate parent and educator voice in the formation of this legislation. I later served on the mayor's advisory committee along with a parent from the South Shore Pre-K program and other community and education leaders. We made recommendations around teacher training and curriculum selection and enrollment structures and facilities that became specific policy line items in the preschool program. From the beginning, the formation of this program in these classrooms has included first-person community voice. It's been built in collaboration with our city's policymakers. It's included and respond to our voices, including in the most obvious way, when the citizens voted overwhelmingly to approve the Seattle Preschool Program. The inclusion of these voices is part of what makes the program a strong one. The study coming out of Vanderbilt University recently concerning the impact of pre-K, a study that's been cited frequently by members of this school board, does not invalidate the power of early learning. No one's study can overturn decades of neuroscience and cognitive research that proves the tremendous potential of the learning of young children. For many examples, see the academic journal Science of Early Childhood Development, or pieces coming out of the Center of the Developing Child from Harvard, or the Haskins Laboratories from Yale. What's more, the Vanderbilt piece is not attempting to do this, so don't allow it to be misconstrued by politics or have its implications examined in part rather than in whole. What we can learn from Vanderbilt in Tennessee is that we need to watch our programs closely and put in place qualitative and quantitative measures that include first-person student, parent, and teacher voice to ensure that our classrooms are meeting the needs of students. The city set us up for this when they delivered us legislative frameworks for classrooms that already included the solicitation of first-person community voice. What we do with that framework is of course up to you. Whether we use it or whether we abandon it and turn our back on that community input is up to you. I strongly encourage you to continue serving Seattle Public School students through Seattle Preschool Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Tamaya, Cecilia McCormick, and Susan Wilson. Cecilia McCormick?
I'm gratified. Directors Geary and Harris have offered an amendment to the further expansion of, to me, an obviously flawed city pre-K program. Forgive my skepticism about a task force, however. You know, if CAC, PIKDAC, and FACMAC are any indication, not much may come of it without leadership and political will. Apparently, district staff has rationalized the differences between various district preschool programs as funding-related. OSPI, the same agency that was asleep at the wheel while district sped hit the fan, finds that this reasoning doesn't constitute discrimination. This is disturbing to me. Sounds too much like inferior schools in high-minority neighborhoods are so due to finances, or boys' sports get better gear because they bring in more money. It's not discrimination, no. It's funding, or zip code, or curricular focus, et cetera. You know, this is absurd and unacceptable. Districts like Seattle with major over-identification of minorities in special education can be compelled to use 15% of its IDEA Part B funds to provide true coordinated, comprehensive early intervention services, including pre-K for children with or without disabilities. We have funds. Are we using them correctly? No. We're shortchanging the disabled preschoolers. So do this right, and do it right now. Rewrite this MOU and make this a district-led program for our 670 needy children you serve now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I've been a teacher for over 30 years. I currently teach kindergarten at Arbor Heights. Most of my years of experience are in kindergarten, first grade, and Head Start program. I have seen the academic rigor and length of day in kindergarten increase over these years. I have also seen how children who have attended a good preschool come to me ready to succeed. There are some wonderful private preschools in the Arbor Heights area, and I get their students every year, coming in with a wealth of background knowledge and educational experiences, excitement for learning, and a sense of self-confidence. Sadly, there are many other students whose families cannot afford a private school. They come to kindergarten already behind, lacking basic skills such as phonemic awareness, beginning math concepts. They don't even know how to do school. The students whose primary language is not English struggle even more, as do their parents who don't know the right questions to ask. The opportunity gap or achievement gap is already present in kindergarten, and it's evident every day, every year. Repeated research emphasizes the importance of the early years in helping students build a foundation to succeed throughout their lives. We, as Seattle schools, have an opportunity to benefit these students and their families. Children should not be penalized just because their parents cannot afford private school. I urge the school board to continue providing students and their families with the opportunity to have a great foundation for their educational career at the three current sites and to add the proposed new sites. Help us give each child the best start possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Urser, Sandra Rollins, and Kristin Spada.
Good evening. My name is Jim Urser. I live in Loyal Heights, and I wanted to talk about the Loyal Heights School remodel. I was a part of building this 25,000-square-foot beautiful park on the school property there, and it was all asphalt before. And part of the, I mean, it's used all the time by the neighborhood and by the kids during the school, and it has grass on it, and the grass got worn, and we needed to water it. And so, the school district, we said, we want to water it, and they said, well, no, you can't. I said, well, why not? They said, we can't afford the water, pay for the water. So we said, well, pay for the water. And we still couldn't get it being watered. So now, come along, is this remodel, and one of the reasons they're using for getting rid of 50% of the play space is that the grass is worn away. And it sort of speaks to the whole process that we, the community, who has supported this school for a long time, and really consistently, and built this beautiful park, it cost like School district comes along with a remodel, and there's absolutely no input from the community, absolutely none. And what comes out is, it's too, the design is way too big, there's a courtyard that's not needed, it's a Tier 4 when it really should be a Tier 3 for the size of the lot, and it's 65% over budget. And nobody seems to really care. I mean, we've talked about this before, and what has struck me about this is the lack of transparency by the school district. So I would urge you to at least revisit this and not let this happen to any of the other remodels. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Rollins. I'd like to ask you to please state your name before you speak so we know that you're on this list.
Okay. Well, I am Sandra Rollins, and I'm a teacher at Gatzert. And I'm gonna try to read this paper this time, but I have to start talking first, so. Now, I'm not going to go through all the good information that was already given to you, plus, I'm sure you've already researched the preschool programs and the benefits and all this la-la-la stuff, but you have an early learning department that is capable of doing many, many things, I presume, because, you know, they're under your jurisdiction, they're under us, and I believe in them. If they can handle it, let them do some, and hold them accountable for the preschool program. This is something new, and that's great, because guess what? As educators, and I'm gonna start reading and pay attention, as educators, we are the forefront of encouraging change and exploration. This is the primary mission we are to instill in our students. As a district and school board, you have an invaluable opportunity to show our community, state, and beyond that closing the achievement gap, equity access to services, and preparing students for school, sometimes we have to look to, we have to look at change and exploration. Sometimes it involves risk, being different, going against the grain. But in the long run, we will be known as innovative, mission-focused, brave. The public will see us as taking steps to explore a new frontier to better theirs and all our children. A district that is willing to try new programs that can help achieve the district missions. The government will see us as a willing partner to encourage and support where we can so we can be ongoing collaborators of making contributing citizens to society. Being first in line is sometimes scary, because this is new, but it's like jumping from the diving board the first time. You're not sure why you're up there, water's looking deeper than you thought, legs are shaking, the edge of the pool is getting further away, but when you take that initial plunge and look up and see that you made it, oh, what joy and a lasting memory of courage you have. Seattle Public Schools, we are on that diving board. We've been given the lessons, a swimsuit, and even a life preserver.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, from the city. We just need to make that commitment and jump. Evaluate along the way. Make changes as educators should. We know we can do it. Let's be the innovators of change like we want our children to be.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Kristin Spada, kindergarten teacher, Bailey Gatzert. I've been a kindergarten teacher for 20 years, and last summer, after Jump Start was over, in the middle of the summer, I worked with the transitioning pre-kindergarteners, and I looked at my principal, Greg Emel, and said, they're ready for kindergarten. Kindergarten is the new first grade. I expect students on their first day of school to know their name, how to spell their name, how to recognize their name, know the letters of the alphabet, numbers 1 through 10, colors and shapes. This is not the case for many of our students. Without these skills, I find myself spending great amount of time, often months, on these foundational skills that children needed to acquire before coming into kindergarten. 96% of the children I teach are growing up in poverty. Academically, the odds are against them because they don't have access to resources to be successful learners. Poverty means families worry first about the basic necessities for survival. It's the cruelest barrier to education. These children need to be exposed to books, to reading, they need to be talked to, they need to have developed vocabulary, they need to interact with their peers to develop social skills and to develop self-regulating skills. When a child enters kindergarten lacking these skills to be successful, it becomes difficult to move them forward. When I have students with limited vocabulary who could not follow directions or interact with their peers, it affects my ability to teach curriculum to them. I have to go back, I have to rebuild the foundation that had been, that should have been built. Education eradicates poverty. Please vote yes. Please vote yes and help these kids.
Thank you.
Directors, my name is Deborah Mobley, and what a great segue to my comments. She said the kids need to know their names. I'm here about registration and about asking the school board to change something on the registration application, and that is to phonetically pronounce every name of every kid and every parent. The first thing that a kid does when they go to school is they want to be addressed correctly. When you call my name up here, I would hope that you say my name correctly. I had to ask how to say Jill Geary to say it correctly. Now, why am I here? I'm also a football announcer in Little League sports, as Ms. Betty Patu might know because of her son having been coached. Many times, when I pronounce their names incorrectly, they will bang on the wall and say, that is not how you do it. So from everything, from graduation ceremonies, sporting events, award ceremonies, if you say a person's name right, it makes a wonderful experience. Even people want Siri to say their name right. And also, also, it would not be any different. It's an automated piece of paper. The school district could be a leader, and not only having people pronounce names correctly in the school district, we could be a leader for the city. Your names either, one day it'll be a mouseover, and you can do that, but one day, it'll be better because people in Seattle will know how to, we boast ourselves on being educated and fit. Why don't you take the lead and get that right so that when kids come to school, they won't be embarrassed? It shows that you're going the extra mile. It shows your interest in the kid, and also for the parents when they come for a parent-teacher association meetings. So that's all I have to say. Jill Geary, God bless you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. Congratulations to those parents. I was here in the campy days. Go preschoolers.
Eileen Sinclair and Melinda Flores.
I've worked as a lead developmental preschool teacher at Bailey Gatzert for six years. Some of you have visited my classroom this week. Thank you for taking the time to come and observe the work that is being done. My team and I provide a general education preschool environment for 20 children who have IEPs, who are profoundly affected by autism, physical motor delays, social, emotional, and global developmental delays, and for four children who are typically developing. I have an AM and a PM session. I rely on those typically developing peers to model appropriate speech, play, and social skills to my IEP students. I recruit children from the neighborhood, younger siblings, and those students that reflect the student population at Gatzert. I can only enroll four, though. I have always had a peer waiting list. Right now, there are eight children on my waiting list, and I don't take more than that. that because I feel like it gives families a false hope that maybe their students will get in. Families in the area do not have enough options for robust early childhood programs. The Seattle Public Preschool Program at Gatzert has increased opportunity for children and their families in our neighborhood. Many more families can now access appropriate early learning environments that help close the opportunity and achievement gap early on. The preschool program at Gatzert has opened opportunities of collaboration between the new pre-K teacher and I. We are able to discuss curriculum development, IEs are able to observe between the two programs and enrich interactions, and observe skills between the, students can play together, and it enriches the experience for everyone. When the program is renewed, we hope to continue and deepen the work of inclusion and collaboration between our programs. My three-year-old peer students can go on to attend the full-day pre-K. And those students can then go on to attend the kindergarten at Gatzert, all within the same building. Next year, I hope to have some of my students with IEPs go on to attend-
Please wrap up your comment, please.
Go on to attend the pre-K, the full-day pre-K, and continue to receive special education services within the building, and then receive support in kindergarten and have friends built in. And I believe this is a beautiful model of inclusion that can continue only if Seattle preschool program continues. Please continue to support our families and our students who are typically developing and have special needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melinda Flores. This is my second time attesting to how impactful the pre-K program specifically at Bailey Gatzert has had on my son Jesse Allen. Our family is a military family of over 20 years, and we transitioned last year in December from living overseas for over a decade, and was pleasantly surprised to see a newly established pre-K program being offered in our district. My son started his educational experience in a preschool program overseas consisting of foreign teaching curriculum where English language was being taught in an extracurricular class. He struggled tremendously but eventually adapted as best as he could. As a direct result, his emotional connection with school was negatively impacted. As you can guess, when we were permanently transitioning back here to the States and choosing Seattle, and more so the public school community in our next stage of life, we prepared ourselves that this may be too much for Jesse Allen, especially since we took him out of school mid-year. We were fearfully waiting because there would be another full, a full seven to eight months where he would have to wait to kindergarten to kick off, waiting for him to start a new schedule, waiting for him to build trust with his peers, his teachers, and faculty, and again, mostly fearful that he had to adapt yet again to another culture of learning in his tender fourth year of life. But Bailey Gatzert pre-K program was a perfect transitioning tool. Championed by Principal Emmel and passionately led by Mr. Darren and Ms. Ramona, and evidently buy-ins from the parents and Squire Park community, every day in pre-K started off with an "I can" attitude versus "never." He used to yell "never" every day going to school. I can honestly state that this early learning program has directly attributed to cultivating my confident young man who's now a kindergartner in Ms. Spada's class, and possesses a strong optimistic perspective in accomplishing everything and anything, and is evident in his class scores and exceptional comprehensive skills. Therefore, I encourage you wholeheartedly to continue supporting the existing pre-K program and extend this beneficial and impactful pre-K program to other schools and more so make it sustainable, especially for our newest family member in the upcoming months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This conclude our public testimony. We are now going into board comments. Who would like to be first? Director Carey.
I find, I feel like I am always first. Thank you for the We Act Young Artists sharing their voices with us. I think everybody who was here and heard that could see the power that they gained from using their voice, and that's something that I'd like for all of us to encourage in our, our young people in our schools, encourage them to use their voices. There can be nothing more powerful than that. And then thank you, Dwayne Jack and Jessica Nagamatsu, for your comments, well, for you being here, Mr. Jack, and Jessica, for your comments about middle college. Always appreciate a reminder that we need to continue to look for places for everybody. I did two school visits within D3 this period, one Roosevelt High School, so thank you to Principal Vance, and one to Eckstein Middle School, so, and with Principal Stark. Just enjoy to get to know each of the schools within my district and will continue to visit them. Roosevelt, I was so impressed at the variety of the alternative learning opportunities there. The kitchen, where I got to talk about the cupcake wars that are going on in the school. The runway project, the types of things going on in the sewing room. And just a reminder that we're always going to be looking for those opportunities for our kids away from just the academics. Attended the Roosevelt Jazz Auction, again, what a shining star. I believe they're off to Ellington here in a month or two, and so we'll keep our fingers crossed for them. Congratulations to May Williams, Middle School Principal of the Year. And then I wanted to thank, give a special thank you, have been spending a lot of time, lots of time, on the Seattle preschool program. I want to thank Monica Ling Aguirre, again, maybe I need that phonetics pronunciation, and Dwayne Chappell for taking us on a tour of the program, visited all three of the sites. And of course, they are darling. It is lovely to see children engaged. And we will do what we can to support that, and we want to support that, and we want to support it in a way that is responsible fiscally and to all of our students. And I'll talk more about that when it gets to our amendment. But those are my comments. Again, all the good work. Thank you, everybody, for being here, standing up for our kids. And my next meeting is on Saturday, March 26th, at the Mountain Lake Branch Library, and I want to give a big apology to the people who, because of the retreat, my meeting was moved from last weekend, and they showed up because we had one webpage saying one thing and another something else. So my apologies to them. Thank you for coming and trying to participate, and I hope you will show up on the 26th.
Director Harris.
Thank you to all of you sitting there and for the folks that shared your profound testimony, it's hugely helpful. Thank you as well for the people that email and call and tell their stories. Watching the young people speak this evening, it doesn't get better than that, and I'm hoping that communications can take the We Act folks' performances and put it on the website and on YouTube, and we can celebrate that as far and wide as possible. We have every right to be incredibly proud of that talent. Thank you to Ken Gotch, Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance. Just got an email from him that he's upstairs working at his desk, not down here. What an extraordinary man and what an extraordinary gift he gave to this district, and for those of us that are learning our way around millions and tens of millions of dollars, his guidance has been extraordinary and appreciated. Thank you to Superintendent Peggy McAvoy, who I was pleased to work with last week at a community meeting at Chief South International High School regarding safety issues. It was a good, rowdy discussion, complete with half dozen police officers, all armed and ready. We have safety issues in our schools. We have concerns about whether or not we're doing an effective job of communicating with our parents when safety issues are out there. And there are really good things underway, and the dialogue and collaboration that evening was a beautiful thing to watch. And I appreciate it because you never schedule these things. You pick them up, you roll, you work as a team. The Seattle Preschool Partnership. How can we be against little kids learning and playing? It's like being against apple pie. But we do, in fact, have a duty to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the Seattle Public Schools. And towards that end, some of our colleagues and together with a great deal of assistance from staff, Mr. Jesse Wyeth, Mr. Stephen Nielsen, the Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Keshel Tonner, the Director of Early Childhood Education, Ms. Aguirre, or Agirri, which one?
Agirri.
Agirri, thank you. I like the phonetics suggestion that we had. And Dwayne Chappell as well. And we came up with this amendment so that it could, in fact, be inclusionary and equitable and proactive. And it's all fine and good to say we're gonna look at it, but we need to have a task force so that we meet, we get the input, we fine-tune it, and we make it even better than what it is now. And this is a good collaborative, team-driven solution. And I think anytime you get folks of opposing viewpoints in the same room, you win. I'm hoping that everyone is calling the governor and asking about McClary. I'm hoping that everyone is calling their legislators and telling them what they think about the recent gymnastics and the kick-the-can down the road in Olympia, because this district is paying every day for the poor funding models that we get that are unconstitutional. With respect to money, we've got two issues on the agenda tonight. We are asking parents to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars to make our programs work. Over $3 million of PTSA and parent funds goes into balancing our budget to offer what we offer today. Now, I read today that there'll be a task force for immersion learning. I'm thrilled to see that. We've gotta do better, we've gotta do differently, because it can't just be the folks that can raise the money. It cannot be pay-to-play. That is the very definition of inequity. Thank you.
What's next? Director Burke.
There was a shooting at Ranger Beach today. My daughter was shot after a 8:00 a.m. party in a relatively private car. The graduate group gathered at our home that caught my daughter in the car. What are we doing to help the south side of the city? There was a scene today, and there was a lot of damage. And I hear her talking about different things, but violence can't work with this rate. But I'm tired, I'm tired of all we have to do. I can't stop it, I'm having a hard time. I really need to apologize. But people are getting shocked at me. You know, I don't want to talk to them.
You can probably talk to one of our staff person.
You have the good fortune of being able to talk to Peggy McAvoy.
But I have to say, because violence every day. And nothing's being done to the kids, and they're afraid of us going to tend to work her down, and that's why I'm helping her out. And there are people, and I'm here with the elder that's been helping these kids, but they are not happy. They're not happy, and I have to train them because of that.
But talk to Ms. McAvoy. That's why she's there, not to take you away, but because she's the person-
I agree with you. I think you went on to your wife, and I didn't want to-
No, she's the person to talk to.
Please do follow up with her at some point or another, because this is a powerful, directed woman that can help you.
I'm a black person. You know, my daughter could have got shot there, where she was at, and nobody knows that. We keep you informed of the good things. I'm trying to be accurate.
We hear you and we understand what you're talking about, so thank you for the comments.
I also want to thank you for the comments, because that sort of information is really critical as we're trying to figure out how to provide the best services and the best safety to our students. I wanted to share my appreciation, massive appreciation to the We Act Young Artist Academy students. It's really an amazing thing when the students become the teachers. They're, I want to thank them for sharing their passion and candor. I also had the pleasure of visiting McDonald International, and I want to put a word of thanks for Dan Golsman, for his time and the tour. I got to visit kindergarten, first grade, fourth grade classrooms, the Japanese and the Spanish immersion. I learned a lot about the work that they're doing to identify and support their students. They've, they've got a particularly great model where they're applying the MTSS strategies. I want to put out a statement of support for the students at Chief South High School who are advocating to keep their woodshop program open. Personally, I experienced the value of our in-school Voc-Tech programs, and I know that a lot of our students will have an opportunity to have a laptop or a tablet in front of them, but they won't necessarily have the opportunity to have a drill press or a wood lathe or some of the tools that we can provide in these classes. So I really believe in that, and I hope that as a board director, I can help find solutions to keep that program in place. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Nagamatsu for your, for your pending graduation, and thanks for sharing your inspirational story about the work at Middle College. I also wanted to say the, the idea of phonemic addition to the forms, this is the sort of innovation that comes from our community. When we get into a mindset where we're looking at compliance, we're looking at checking the boxes, sometimes these sort of ideas don't come to the surface. So I just want to really share my appreciation for, for bringing that to the board, because I think it's a cool idea also. I'll discuss my Seattle preschool program comments as part of that board action report. In general, I want to say that I believe that fits really well within a comprehensive continuum of services, and look forward to, you know, hearing what my colleagues have to say, and I thank everyone for their thoughtful and passionate comments. I had the ability as well to visit Bailey Gatzert and was really impressed with the program. And the, the kids got to paint watercolors, sit in a small chair. It sort of took me back. And then in closure, I have a community meeting coming up, March 26th as well, at Cafe Apachenado in Interbay. This is not yet posted on the website, but we'll get it posted shortly in the next day or two. Thank you.
I too want to definitely give a shout-out to the We Act students there. Talks and speeches were inspirational and very moving and showing, you know, that when students learn to speak up for themselves, that they have a voice. You know, it's amazing, usually when you hear people talk, even that, that had many years of education, they'll pause and um and ah's, but they spoke with passion and got their words out. And thank you to them and Toya for bringing them here, and hopefully we can have them back again, because they're sharing some very good words that we need to keep going. Congratulations to everyone that's been awarded. For one of our principals to get a national award is amazing, and hopefully we can learn from her and what she's done for us. I too, I went to Bailey Gatzert this morning, and thank you for hosting me there. And yes, this can make some big strides. I saw a little boy there share his story, and it wasn't one of those little kids that were sharing a story and saying, you know, "I went to the store, and that's the end," but he had very much passion and even changed his voice to add drama to his story. And that's just amazing to see that, and I could see that carrying on as they go on to kindergarten and go through our school system. So I do see definitely the value of having our preschool programs increased here in the Seattle School District and working with the city of Seattle so that we are serving the needs of our students, the needs of our community. Definitely want to say welcome to Anya, thank, thank you for being here and joining us today, and to- Thank you for being here and joining us today and to Lauren for all that she's done as she's trying to take on the load. But now we'll see where we can go from here. Thank you to Ken Gotch as well for the work that he's done. Thank you, Dwayne Jack. You know, again, silent but strong in the presence that we have here to know that what you've done. He's, as you mentioned, he's part of the Clear Sky Native Youth Council with United, the Urban Native Educational Alliance. And I want to congratulate them, actually. They just celebrated their eighth anniversary on March 8th and they acknowledged me and I was very humbled by that. I also want to mention that the United Indigenous of All Tribes Foundation actually had their 46th anniversary this month for the takeover at Fort Lawton. And they celebrated, you know, that there, yes, we had a voice, we made ourselves visible and the Seattle community, the Seattle area listened and they now have their beautiful building, Daybreak Star. And also must acknowledge that the Native community had a passing of one of our true leaders. Emmett Oliver passed away actually on the anniversary of the takeover at Fort Lawton on March 7th of 102 years. He lived 102 strong years. He was actually the first Indian Education Director for the Washington State Office of Public Instruction. So seeing him pass on, you know, and what we've done since then is good strides, but a lot more that we have to do. In a previous board meeting, I had mentioned Elizabeth Peratovic and asked people, "Go do your homework and see who she was." She was a Klinkit woman who in 1945 with her husband helped pass the first comprehensive anti-discrimination law in the United States in 1945 in Alaska, before Alaska was a state. They helped pass the first comprehensive anti-discrimination law. Let's see, also the Clear Sky, actually, Native Youth Council will be having their fifth annual conference, April 14th and 15th. Their theme is interweaving generations, past, present, and future. Hopefully get the words out to our students to possibly attend that. I will be having my District One Community Meeting on Saturday, March 26th at 3:30 at North Gate Library and also one scheduled in April, April 23rd at 2 o'clock at Lake City Library. I am looking for any invitations for May meetings, so anybody, if you want me to come out, please email me and I'll try to definitely touch base, you know, because this is one thing where I want to go out to you as much as I can versus you coming to me. And so let me know if you need me anyplace or want me to come in and talk. And also thank you to the presenters, yes, Seattle, on the Seattle Preschools, but also on that we have a transparent operations here, I think, with most of us that were running this past year. That was part of our platform. We need to have transparency. As we move forward, we'll support that. So we don't have anything where things are going on, hopefully too much behind the scenes that we're letting you know this is where it's at and we're going to engage you. We're going to talk to the community and move forward together. Thank you.
Dr. Peters?
I would also like to thank all the students who came and spoke tonight and also our guest, Dwayne Jack. Perhaps someday you can come back as a board director and then you'll have lots of opportunities to speak. And then to the students from the Young Artists Academy, their performance was very real, very powerful, and very compelling. I hope those of you who may be tuning in late can go back and watch the tape and watch the beginning of tonight's meeting and you'll catch their wonderful performance. Along those lines, I'd like to give a shout out to the Ballard High School Advanced Women's Choral and Concert Choir. They're headed to New York to participate in the Choirs of America Nationals for Top Choirs Program and they will be performing at Carnegie Hall. So best of luck to them. Okay. I would also like to send my regards to Ken Gotch and thank him for his service with the district. I very much appreciated his professionalism, his integrity, his willingness to find solutions and his responsiveness to the board, the superintendent, and the public. That was very much noted. He also had a great commitment to transparency and I hope all the new protocols and the approaches he's begun, we can continue. And I wish him well back in Chicago with his family. I visited a library in the last couple of weeks. I went to Santa Sloan Elementary and talked with some of the kids there, brought some books that some of my own children had outgrown. And got a chance to talk to librarian Craig Seasholes there and talked about what it means to be a teacher librarian and how important they are becoming in our, even more so in our schools where we have a lot of technology and a lot of information being distributed through computers. More importantly, we talked about the issue of equity in our libraries and how we have some libraries that are very well resourced and others that don't. And so what we need to do as a district to help fully resource all of our libraries. So I just want to keep talking about that because I think it's something we haven't fully addressed and I don't know whether it's MSOC money we're looking at or whether this is money we'd be looking at from the, our IT budget, I mean, our BECS budget, but I would really like to see us make a commitment to all our libraries. There's also research that shows that children, underserved children who are exposed to libraries have greater academic outcomes as a result. There's definitely, you know, a connection there. On some other issues, there is a lot of interest and concern about advanced learning in the district right now and I would like to have some conversations with staff and the superintendent about our vision and direction for a highly capable program and also for all of our advanced learners. There is some nervousness because we are a growing district and there's going to be some capacity issues coming up. We have a very large, we have a very large elementary school in the north end and parents would like to know where their kids are headed. I would like to say right now that I would like to bring as much stability as possible to our students. Many of our families have already been moved around from many buildings as a part of the HCC APP cohort and they've seen their children go to as many as five schools. And so I would like to make decisions that do not interrupt these children anymore than they already have been interrupted and see what we can do in terms of grandfathering them in and while at the same time having realistic capacity goals addressed. Couple other issues. The Cedar Park boundaries issue has come up. It came up at one of my community meetings and I'm glad to hear that staff is looking at that. We are hearing a lot about that. I would appreciate an update perhaps in the next Friday memo because we certainly don't want to create schools that have great inequities in them from the start and based on some sort of zoning design. And here I am saying all those ums. At my recent community meeting, another topic that came up was the difference between online learning and learning with an instructor in the classroom and what is gained and lost in either one. And we were primarily concerned about what it means to put a student in front of a computer without any kind of interaction and how we've got to watch for that and watch for that balance. And we should be careful that we're not putting only some students in front of computers and giving other students instruction with a live human because the difference is significant. And so this is an ongoing discussion and there's some curricular materials we're using nowadays that are all online. And I think this is something I would ask our Curriculum and Instruction Committee to be looking at to make sure that these fulfill our needs for our students to have a totally interactive education. By that, I mean with humans, not just computers. Another topic I wanted to cover was, oh, the minutes. So you may have noticed at last, at the last meeting, we had to withdraw some minutes and we had to address them and put them back on the agenda and we passed and we, you know, we approved them. Here's why. Two of our work sessions, the MTSS and the Math in Focus, Scope and Sequence, did not include any input from the directors, only included input from the staff. So we've now, coincidentally, we're having a conversation about our minutes policy and we're making some changes that says that we will always include the comments from the directors as well as from staff. Sometimes you have to really spell these things out, but for the public record, it's important to have this included. So I think that's it for my riveting list. And now, as the Chair of Audit and Finance, I am compelled to read a paragraph that is required by Board Procedure 6550 VP. And this is from the Internal Audit and I need to announce the completed audits at the next schedule, at this scheduled school board meeting. So here is a summit of our, summary of our recent audits. At the March 15th Quarterly Audit and Finance Committee Meeting, the Office of Internal Audit presented three audit reports. The first audit was a follow-up to a previous testing integrity audit which found that all previous concerns had been corrected. The other two audits were school audits at Franklin High School and Olympic View Elementary School. The reports included findings related to cash handling and receipting and the screening of volunteers and chaperones. All internal audits are discussed at a Public Audit and Finance Committee Meeting and the completed reports are available online at the Office of Internal Audit's public webpage. You click on Departments under the District tab and then you click on Internal Audit. Thank you.
Director Blanford?
Wow, after following up that audit report, I don't know if I'll be able to keep everybody's attention, but I'll try. I will also try to be brief, being aware of the time. I just want to appreciate all of the folks who came out to testify in one way or another. It is critically important that we know the perspectives of our community. I want to thank the Young Artists Academy and their riveting performance. It warms my heart to know and to hear people speak passionately about their challenges in life, particularly our students, to speak eloquently about their challenges in life. And it makes it real for all of us. I want to thank my dear friend Mia Williams for the fantastic award that she's gotten and it seems like she's just accumulating award after award, but I know that she is doing fabulous work and providing strong leadership at Aki. And so I am excited that she's earned some recognition. And I want to thank the Superintendent for recognizing the passage of Ernestine Anderson. I'll tell a very quick personal story, only to say that the first date that my wife and I had together, we got a chance to hear Ernestine Anderson sing. And as a jazz, huge jazz fan, I noted her passage with a lot of reminiscence and a bit of sadness. She was someone who was not recognized, not nearly enough for the beauty of her singing and particularly given the fact that she's a Garfield graduate. Garfield has produced a lot of musical geniuses. I count Jimi Hendrix and Quincy Jones amongst that list and she has, and somehow she's managed to get short shrifts. So it saddens me that it took her passage for her to be noted in the way that she should have been while she was alive. My next community meeting is scheduled for the 23rd of April at Douglas Truth Library. It will start at 10 o'clock. My apologies for the fact that it should have happened last week, but we had a board meeting that kept that from happening. And then finally, as a, in my professional life, I spent a lot of time working with educators and one of the seminal documents that I use and that other consultants use is called 20 Self-Critical Things I Will Do to Become a More Equitable Educator. And it lists 20 separate things that people in classrooms have done in, with the goal of becoming more equitable. And the first one on the list, and I'll read it because I think it attaches really well to what Deborah Mosley said. Mobley, Mobley said, "It is, 'I will learn to pronounce every student's full given name correctly. No student should feel the need to shorten or change her or his name to make it easier for me or for their classmates to pronounce. I will practice and learn every name regardless of how difficult it feels or how time-consuming it becomes. This is the first step in becoming inclusive.'" And so the fact that Deborah Mobley brought that up to our attention and made that suggestion is a, is a structural change that we could make is evidence that, in my mind, that we are acknowledging and we are trying to work to become more equitable. And I would love to see her suggestion actually implemented because I think it's a sound practice that goes beyond what's happening in the classroom to have it be district-wide. So I appreciate those types of comments. I think they're well-served and we as a school board learn a lot from our community. And so, thank you.
I want to say thank you to our special guest, Dwayne Jack, for your presence, even though you didn't say anything, but thank you for your presence and we appreciate you. And I want to thank you to the Young Artists Academy for such an amazing performance. Just hearing the students speak their mind and the speeches came from their hearts, which I felt that it's something that's not utilized a lot with our kids and I really appreciate that and definitely we will try to bring them back. I want to say thank you also to every speaker that came tonight to let us know about what, you know, what is it that your issue is and how can we be better, board directors and listening and being able to accommodate a lot of things that you actually have expressed tonight. And I want to say congratulations to Mia Williams for an award well deserved. Mia has gone above and beyond. I remember when I first, she first moved to Aki and she came into a lot of needs at that particular school, but she actually, because of who she is, she made sure that she was able to find ways to be able to change the outcome of that school. And she's done an amazing job since she's been at Aki and that school have gone nowhere but up. So congratulations Mia for a job well done. And also wanted to say thank you so much also to Lauren for doing a job that two people should have, should be doing, but she was able to really to keep everybody happy and balance everything from one end to the other. So thank you so much, Lauren, for your artistic skills in terms of keeping us abroad. And also we wanted, wanted again to welcome our new, welcome Anya for here at our first board meeting. We are happy to have you. So we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break and then we'll come back and resume our meeting.